Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Harrisburg City Council Legislative Session, March 22, 2016. I'm calling this meeting to order at 6:05. Beg your pardon for the lateness of the meeting. I had to retain my glasses. Moving on to the roll call. Mr. Petrowski, please do the roll call.
Mr. Allott.
President.
Mr. Baltimore.
Here.
Ms. Daniels.
Here.
Ms. Hodges.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Majors.
Here.
Ms. Williams.
Here. Thank you, Mr. Petrowski. Moving on to the invocation, Mr. Johnson.
If we can all bow our heads and have a moment of silence, especially for the tragedy that took place in Belgium, for the families and the victims that were injured in such a horrendous attack, I would also like to ask that we have a moment of silence and have prayer as we go into the spring and the summer for the city of Harrisburg, praying for a peaceful summer where we are not experiencing a high volume of shootings and deaths. We're all, in all our different ways and throughout, you know, different parts of the community, one thing we all have to remember that we're family and that, you know, in order for us to, you know, become better humans, we have to kind of respect and love one another. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to pledge allegiance, Ms. Hodges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for its standing, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to communications. We have none this evening, and we move on to courtesy of the floor. Courtesy of the floor, I'll start to my right. Please come to the mic now if you would like to speak before council.
You want to stand at the mic, please?
Oh, certainly.
Thank you. And give those to Mr. Petrowski, and he will hand those out, please, sir.
Thank you very much, sir.
President Williams and members of Harrisburg City Council, my name is Zachary Haas, and I am the director of the Central Pennsylvania Area Labor Federation, AFL-CIO. We're the regional affiliate of the National AFL-CIO. Today, we come on behalf of the Pennsylvania Fair Trade Coalition, the Central Pennsylvania Area Labor Federation, and Harrisburg Region Central Labor Council to ask the Harrisburg City Council, consider passing a resolution opposing the passage of the Trans-Pacific Partnership. A copy of that resolution has been provided to each member of City Council for review. The resolution is part of a national effort to demonstrate the opposition of the Trans-Pacific Partnership from local governments. To date, resolutions have passed in Allegheny County and are under consideration in Philadelphia, as well as Westmoreland County. In many cases, local government have seen the detrimental impact of prior trade deals, such as the North American Free Trade Agreement, also known as NAFTA, and they've seen the detrimental impact more than federal and even state governments. So what is the Trans-Pacific Partnership? The Trans-Pacific Partnership has been called a trade deal, though that term has generated controversy because of its treaty-like implications. According to the BBC, those in favor say this trade deal will unleash new economic growth among countries involved. Those against, particularly some Americans, fear it would mean jobs will move from the U.S. to developing countries. They also do not like the fact the five-year talks were held largely in secret. So the TPP, in a nutshell, the Trans-Pacific Partnership, involves 12 countries: the United States, Japan, Malaysia, Vietnam, Singapore, Brunei, Australia, New Zealand, Canada, Mexico, Chile, and Peru. The pact aims to deepen economic ties between these nations, slashing tariffs and fostering trade to boost growth. Member countries are also hoping to foster a closer relationship on economic policies and regulation. The agreement could create a new single market, something like that of the EU. Where do the people stand on the issue of trade? The current debate on trade represents a transcendent movement happening across the U.S. Our broad coalition has truly turned a corner in opposing the TPP, and we are driving the debate. Currently, all leading candidates running for President of the United States oppose the TPP. State and local leaders are not staying silent either. The issue of trade brings together Democrats and Republicans. Republicans and Democrats at the local level oppose bad trade. Some examples from Pennsylvania. York County Commissioner Chris Riley, a Republican, recently penned a column titled, "Next President Must Help U.S. Manufacturers," opposing a continuation of bad trade deals, stating, "Pennsylvania has lost more than 120,000 manufacturing jobs in the last decade. While I understand there are always changes occurring within our economy, especially as technology continues to play a more pivotal role in production methods, 120,000 jobs represents more than just a few new computers. It is indicative of the outsourcing of jobs and relocation of countless plants to countries overseas. Due to outdated or unfavorable trade regulations, global interests are taking jobs away from American workers at an alarming rate." In January this year, on WSECA Essential Pittsburgh, Pittsburgh Mayor Bill Paduto, a Democrat, stated, "I do believe that if this trade agreement, the TPP, goes in, that will be the last nail in the coffin to not only the steel industry, but other industries and heavy manufacturing that are in a similar position." But what is the AFL-CIO's position on trade? Don't let anyone tell you the labor movement is opposed to trade agreements. The labor movement is opposed to bad trade agreements. In a global economy, trade must be embraced, but not at the expense of hard-working Americans, and certainly not to the detriment of workers in other countries where labor practices are as bad as, and in some cases, worse than, our own practices in the late 19th and 20th Those practices include, but are not limited to, indentured servitude and the worst forms of exploitative child labor. Our trade agreements should advance an economy that creates good jobs in America and that enables regular working people to succeed by working hard to get ahead. The TPP fails this goal. The TPP is the latest example of a failed approach to trade, starting with NAFTA, which drives down wages and creates special rights for corporations. Passage of the TPP means lost jobs and lower wages, which is why we will continue to work to defeat it. Trade policy has not worked for working people, nor for our country as a whole. This broad coalition stands here today to put an end to bad trade deals. It's time to make trade work for working Americans and not just the top 1%. Some further comment. The Harrisburg Region Central Labor Council unanimously passed a resolution on December 2, 2015, opposing the Trans-Pacific Partnership. That resolution has been provided to each member of Harrisburg City Council tonight. Our members, many of whom live within and around the city of Harrisburg, have seen the impact in their own community and in surrounding communities. In Hershey, for example, hundreds of manufacturing jobs were located in Mexico as a result of NAFTA. Diane Carroll, treasurer of Chocolate Workers Local 464, which is the union for workers at Hershey Chocolate, stated last April in a letter to the editor, "Over the years, we have seen hundreds of jobs shipped to Mexico and elsewhere, thanks, at least in large part, to wayward trade deals such as NAFTA. NAFTA, after being signed in 1993, made shipping those jobs to other countries too easy for large corporations. Those hundreds of jobs were good-paying, family-sustaining jobs locally here in central Pennsylvania. When shipped to somewhere like Mexico, though, not only do the jobs disappear for future generations of people who want to work or live and work in Hershey, but also the community suffers. What is a community without good-paying jobs? It is a place people begin to not recognize. It is a place where local business owners find themselves unable to compete and soon have to shut their doors. It is a place where tax revenues begin to slide. The community becomes only a place where opportunities used to be. That is not what we want to see. We want to see American workers and their jobs protected. The 700,000 jobs lost because of NAFTA would only be the beginning of jobs lost due to bad trade deals if the TPP is approved." As mentioned previously, bad trade deals often leave local governments strapped for revenue. On that note, one usually overlooked impact of trade and globalization deals is the impact on the public sector. When manufacturing centers shut down, the multiplier effect of manufacturing disappears as well. Those who provided services to the factories themselves or to the factory's employees often also go out of business. Revenue from income, sales, and property taxes and business licenses go down, reducing the ability of the public sector to provide services, often at the exact time those services are most needed, leaving many communities economically devastated. That is why we are asking the Harrisburg City Council to pass the resolution opposing the Trans-Pacific Partnership. By passing the resolution, the City Council is signaling their agreement that future trade deals must be done with community impact considered first, corporate profit second. Thank you for your time. I would be happy to entertain any questions or comments you may have. If I cannot immediately address your question, I will work quickly to get an answer to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Haas. We certainly will consider doing a resolution. If any questions, council members can forward those to you at what address? I didn't see an email here.
Oh, it's 4031 Executive Park Drive, and my email, mynamezacharyhaas@AOL.com.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Did everyone get that? You did it so fast. Did everyone get that information?
Name.
Zachary Haas.
H-A-U-S-E.
H-A-U-S-E.
S-E. U-S-E. And give me your email again one more time.
ZacharyHaas@AOL.com.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Haas. Anyone else, please?
Good evening, or good afternoon. My name is Mr. Boyd. I'm from Allison Hill. I have watched the show go on once again for the last 90 days. I have not opened my mouth to what I have seen and what I have heard. Nonprofits are like the biggest snakes that I've ever seen in the city of Harrisburg. We need to call this city instead of Harrisburg. After the one that came from England, we probably need to call it Grantville. They only come when there is money involved. They only come when the grants are involved. They come with some of the best stories that I've ever heard about children that are homeless in the city of Harrisburg, which is a lie, a fallacy that has to be cleaned up. I'm here once again. I haven't opened my mouth for 90 days. Like I said, sometimes you need to investigate. You need to understand what's going on before you open your mouth. This administration, I can only say, and I can say it very strongly, I am ashamed of you. I have never seen a group of individuals that hold the power of a city of less than 50,000 individuals, but they keep knocking on the doors of the poor. They care less about the ones like the elite that could help our cities, that laugh at the city of Harrisburg and leave the city of Harrisburg between the hours of 3:00 and 5:00 and tell them it doesn't really matter. Once again, I'm saying, there is a time, there is a place for everything, but there is also something that needs to be said in this great city. There are many of us that live here that will not even enter into this chamber because they say these words: "They will not help." How many years must I come and stand in the same place and ask, when there are new councilmen, new mayors that are on the front, and we ask the same question? When will you help the homeless of your great city? Instead of riding bicycles on a bike lane, you care nothing about the poor. All I can say once again is, this city and the ones that govern this city, and the new ones now that are under control of this great city, what are you truly going to do? Because there are a group of individuals in this city that are becoming to be very tired. I am a voice for the poor and the homeless of this city. I can only hold up this banner but so much longer. All I'm saying once again, either come and do something just like crime in this city. We should be ashamed of ourselves. We know how to handle this, but they will not do it. So once again, I'm asking, if I live long enough, I've been doing this for eight years. Eight years. How many administrations? We get nothing, but the nonprofits come down here every year getting over $100,000, and they get it. Sometimes you must let that go and take care of the ones that are needy, not the greedy. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you, sir. Anyone else to my right?
Hi, I'm Pat Davis. My family owns Horning's True Value on the hardware store on Second Street. And I'm coming back to ask for, I'm really grateful for, so let me just say that, I'm really grateful for my parking spot. I have one parking spot in front of my hardware store. It's a 15-minute free, and it's really helped out. Before that, I had a loading zone, and people were using it, but a lot of people were afraid to park there. So now, that's really helped out. But I was wondering, I would even help pay for it if I could have just one more space right beside that one, in front of it. There's a bunch of spaces up the street, and that's really good and everything, but when they come in, they don't know about it, and they park anywhere, and they run in and run out, and it's hard on them, and it's hard on me because I have to, you know, watch their car and get their merchandise really quickly. And I just want to say that last year, our business was down $10,000 from the year before when the parking came into stay. And I know you're sick of hearing about parking. So I would just, would like to kind of keep it in your mind, if at all possible, that I could have one more spot. And I would, like I said, I wouldn't mind paying for it if I have to pay for the whole thing, for the sign to put up or whatever, buy the sign. I would do that. Thank you.
And I can address that. I did meet with representatives of the parking authority. At this time, they could not accommodate you, probably providing another space like that. The reason being is that other businesses on that street would want the same, and they, at this time, cannot do that. Now, I did not know that you would provide the monetary for the amount for the parking, but I will go back with them and speak with them and tell them that you're willing to pay for that spot. If you're willing to pay for it, I'm sure they could accommodate you, but they had several requests from other businesses on the street to do the same thing that you wanted, and they just could not accommodate them. The reason they did that is to make sure that, as you indicated yourselves, they dropped off, that people can come back into the city and feel comfortable about taking five or 10 minutes to shop at certain areas in the city on Second Street.
Okay, thank you.
But I will go back with them and talk with Nancy from parking.
Thank you.
I did meet with her and asked her if she could accommodate you by providing that service for you, and she said that she had several other requests, and they just could not accommodate them at that time. But since you indicated that you will pay for that service, I will go back and again and talk to her.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate that.
Mr. Baltimore, did you have a question to ask?
No, I was just thinking, the spot that you were requesting was a 15-minute spot so somebody could run in and out. And you were arguing that some of the businesses that have that 15-minute aren't those in-and-out types of businesses.
Yeah, that's exactly right.
So it might just be a matter of them flipping one of those.
Yeah, we looked at that as well.
Because there's enough space for a tractor-trailer to park across the street in front of Susquehanna Ale House, which is not even open up during the day. And then there's another restaurant, Federal Tap House, which most people don't run in and out. They go in to have lunch or when they sit. A lot of, you'll see that. I'm really the only business on that street that needs that access because the nature of my business, you know, picking up nuts and bolts and a drill bit and stuff like that, needs that spot. I had, just for example, I had a man come in the hardware store today, and he said, I didn't really have exactly what he wanted, but I said, "Well, why don't you go up to 29th Street?" "No, I'll run across this LeMoyne," because there's a True Value in LeMoyne, "and get it over there." I mean, there's no, the only reason why people come to my hardware store downtown is because of location. They need a nut and bolt, and they don't want to go to LeMoyne. They want to get their toilet flapper, or they want to get it right then and there. They didn't want to travel for it. Yeah, including the city. And I'm grateful for the business you guys do with me, but that's why I need that. I mean, they don't need a tractor-trailer's length of loading zones over there, or 15...
They get their deliveries.
Yeah, their deliveries come in and out.
Yeah, but I get deliveries too, and I get a big tractor-trailer full of deliveries twice a week. There's no room for a tractor-trailer anywhere on my side of the street. They just park, and the parking's been really accommodating and not giving them a ticket because there's no place. I mean, that would be that or taking a whole parking spot, a whole, I mean, driving a lane. And that, in itself, is dangerous.
The reason that they did that is to provide a service to the businesses so that they could accommodate the residents who want to come in to shop in the city. As I indicated, if you're willing, they try to give one to each business that was located within that vicinity. And to give you two, other businesses would request that as well. If you're willing to pay for that service, I will go back to Nancy and indicate to her that you're willing to pay for additional unloading and loading spot for your customers.
That's good. I just want to make a note, too, that I'm not the only one along that street that would use it. There's only one 15-minute load zone, and there's how many businesses along there. So I'm not the only one. I might be a little bit more possessive of that spot if I paid for it, but yeah.
That's true. That block is the only, that's the most dense section of Second Street with businesses in general.
I guess my question is, I know you indicated that, I guess, right across the street in front of Susquehanna Ale House, they have, how many do they have over there?
A tractor-trailer can score.
So I guess, I guess one thing that can possibly be looked at from, given what we have now, is seeing if there's some type of, whether it's marketing or cooperation, that may be working through, like, you know, like the DID where, because your customers, only thing they would have to do is park across the street and walk into True Value.
That's correct.
So I think it's about letting them know that there is...
I do. I tell them that when they come in. I said, "Oh, well, you can park across the street," because a lot of them don't realize it, and they're not thinking, "Oh, I'm going to walk across the street." Plus, you know, it's pretty busy, and they don't want to walk across the street. They just want to run in. So I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, so like, yeah, I would say, like, even when it comes for, like, deliveries, you know, people have like, almost like, an open window when their deliveries are expected to come. So let's just say if I'm, you know, the Tap House, and that my deliveries are coming between 8:00 and 10:00, and you have yours at 11:00 and 12:00, I think it's about using, you know, what we have right now. Of course, we can make it better, but what we can use, what we have right now, is kind of where businesses can work together to use what's available. You see what I'm saying? Because I think, I think that would really help, especially if you guys can kind of like stagger your deliveries so you know there's a spot, and they'll come...
Yeah, there's never a spot. We either just take a whole lane of traffic, because, see, that's a pretty big spot to have a tractor-trailer take that. There's, that's never available.
And I understand...
It works. We're making it work.
Yeah, and I understand your frustration too behind it, but, you know, if we can find some type of way for, you know, cooperation of what we do have, you know, and then from our, and we can always try to see if we can push for more, but trying to figure out, working what we have first, and then trying to see what we can do from there.
And I've done that. I've talked to the parking authorities. I'll meet with them again.
Thank you.
Relate to them, you know, what you've indicated tonight, and see what we can work out.
Thank you.
Okay, you're quite welcome. Anyone else from my right? Anyone in the middle, please?
Good evening. I'm Daniel D. Graham, 217 North Second Street here in Harrisburg. I certainly agree with the gentleman who presented that resolution to oppose these trade deals with other countries. I am opposed to the Pacific Trade Deal and also the NAFTA Trade Deal. I believe also, like other people, that those trade deals cost a lot of American manufacturing jobs. And we need to bring these manufact, again, we need to bring these manufacturing production jobs back here to the USA, and the government needs to take action and reopen these factories and bring all of these manufacturing production jobs back here to the USA in the cities and towns, and hire good American workers to make a wide variety of products in our factories. Made here in the USA. And the sooner the better to bring back these manufacturing production jobs, both light, both heavy manufacturing and light manufacturing jobs, making a wide variety of products. And I also, again, I say we need to take drastic action to stop the crime. I'm glad to see in the news reports that the police are increasing their presence at these high-risk, high-crime areas in the city. And the police should find out where the people are getting these guns from, and call in the state police and the national, and the Army National Guard troops also, if necessary, to patrol the streets of our city and protect the good law-abiding citizens, and to catch the criminals and haul them off to jail and prison, and keep the criminals in prison. Maybe we should, in some areas of the city, maybe we should have the police and the Army troops go from house to house, take guns and knives away from everyone. That way, criminals will not be able to buy or steal guns from good law-abiding citizens. We need to take drastic action, and I believe the police are doing the best they can. They are increasing the patrols in the various neighborhoods, and there's some police are patrolling downtown here also. Now and then, I see police officers walking the streets. That's good, but we need more officers. And so I say to council and the mayor, put more police on the streets and hire as many police officers as the budget allows. And one other issue here, how soon can we reroute the suburban auto traffic from North Second Street onto Seventh Street? And put North Second Street back to two-way, and also restore the local CAT bus service on North Second Street, at least from Market Square, at least as far north as Division Street, with the local CAT bus service running both ways on North Second Street. I would use that bus service, and I believe other people would also. These are, these are city streets we're talking about. North Second Street is not a limited-access interstate highway. It's a city street, and many people live along North Second Street. So I like this plan that Mayor Pabin Fuse has proposed. I hope that you people will implement this plan to reroute the suburban auto traffic from Second to Seventh Street and make Second Street two-way again, and restore the local CAT bus service. Okay? And now, I hope everyone has a good weekend, and observe Good Friday, the crucifixion of our Lord Jesus, and celebrate the resurrection of Christ the Lord. Thank you for your attention. God bless.
God bless. Thank you. Anyone else in the middle? Anyone to my left? Thank you. Moving on with the agenda. I approve or minisapprove the legislative... Approve of minutes, approve the legislative session minutes of March 8, 2015. Council members, are any deletions, corrections, or omissions? Hearing none, minutes will stand as approved. Moving on to reports of committee. Report from Chair Johnson on the Public Safety Committee meeting of March 10, 2016. Mr. Johnson, are you ready with your report?
Yes, I am, Madam President.
Thank you.
On March 10, 2016, at 5:30, a public safety committee meeting was held at the Hack Midtown Campus to discuss Bill Four of 2016. It basically discusses reducing the penalties associated with small amounts of marijuana. Present at this meeting was President Williams, Councilman Majors, Councilwoman Hodges, Mayor Pappenfus, Chief Carter, District Attorney Marcico, and Brandon Flood, the Executive Director of the PA Black Caucus. At that meeting, we had over 50 residents and some non-residents attend to participate in good dialogue about the legislation. Different topics were brought up such as how people felt about the fine structure, how people felt about the three-strikes proposal. We also talked about how the summary offenses correlated with the PA Motor Act in terms of the suspensions of licenses. There was also a survey that was passed out at that meeting, which we received and I reviewed, where we had different comments on how people felt about the proposed legislation as it stood and what type of modifications would be made. We are looking to host another meeting on this topic this Thursday, March 24, 2016, at 5:30 at the Public Works Facility, which is located on 1820 Paxton Street. Again, that's 5:30 at the Public Works Facility, which is located on, located at 1820 Paxton Street. And one thing I'm looking for, Neil, if I was looking for, not, I guess, I don't know if we'll be able to get this by the next meeting, but I'm looking to see if we can get clarification directly from PennDOT on the PA Motor Act to see the city's responsibility in terms of reporting. Are we mandated by law to report or do we have discretion at our level or how that kind of correlates with us moving forward?
Depending how responsive they are. I believe we're sort of slaves to a computer system.
Okay.
That seems to be the problem. When it gets plugged in at the DJ office, it's, PennDOT gets, I don't think any humans are involved at that point. You know, the code, the violation goes up. That's the problem Pittsburgh's experiencing.
Okay.
And they are trying to overcome it, but as of my last check, they haven't come to a solution yet.
Okay.
So they were, they thought they were solving the problem.
So basically, you're saying that, I guess, as soon as it goes to DJ's office, regardless of the way it is currently or whether it should be changed to a summary citation, it's a computer-generated type of thing that goes directly?
It's a code that goes in. That's what I'm understanding is. And when the code goes in, it seems to generate again and again back to the same section. Question is whether we can make it go to a different code. But that's not just a legal question, that's a, you know, what kind of codes can go into the computer that don't take the state order to change the computer system. But Pittsburgh, we're hoping, frankly, I'd like Pittsburgh to solve the problem. You know, because they're, you know, because they've been at it for a while.
Okay. Well, yes, so that basically concludes my report. I know we're looking to meet with county officials as well to discuss with the Drug and Alcohol Division of the county, to discuss different possibility of how their services could be useful into, you know, implementing this legislation if passed. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Moving on to report from Chair Williams, myself, on the Administration Committee meeting on March 14, 2016. The Administration Committee met on March 14, 2016 to discuss two topics. One was the Resolution 14, 2016, a resolution appointing Reverend Don Rico E. Colden to the Harrisburg Housing Authority. The other one was a continued discussion of the proposed modifications to the Harrisburg Strong Plan. Resolution 14 regarding Reverend Don Rico E. Colden, we interviewed Mr. Reverend Colden. And Mr. Colden, as appointed to the Harrisburg Housing Authority, indicates that it must be a Harrisburg resident. He is a resident of the City of Harrisburg as well as also, he will be filling a remaining term of the member who resigned effective 4/22, I'm sorry, resigned and will expire. The term will expire on 4/22, 2019, so he will be here to 2019. Reverend Colden has served on numerous boards and provided counseling service to many in the City of Harrisburg. Also, as a pastoral educator, community leader, and mentor, Reverend Colden would certainly be an asset to the City of Harrisburg to serve on the Harrisburg Housing Authority with the wealth of knowledge that he possesses. I recommend that council members please vote affirmative with me for Reverend Don Rico E. Colden to serve on the Harrisburg Housing Authority. Now, moving on to continue discussion of the proposed modification of the Harrisburg Strong Plan, we met with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania's team. We gave them our modifications, our amendments, as well as Mayor Pappenfus' amendments. I did speak with Fred Riddick early today around 5:00. And we will be meeting, council members will be meeting separately, three at a time, two at a time, two at a time, to discuss with Mr. Riddick about the amendments that were proposed by the mayor as well as Mr. Allen and myself. From then, we will set up another meeting, which will be our third meeting of discussion on the Harrisburg Strong Plan. And from there, we will then put the Strong Plan on the agenda for a vote April 26. That is the end of my committee report. And now I will move on to report from Chair Allen on the Budget and Finance Committee meeting on March 16, 2016. Mr. Allen, are you ready for your report?
Aye, thank you.
Thank you.
Budget and Finance Committee met on Wednesday, March 16, at 5:30. Present were Councilmember Johnson, Council President Williams, Councilmember Baltimore, and myself. First, we did a review of report by the Alvarez, that was an audit of the city's treasurer, and it outlined some major flaws in the system. Added some discussion that a presentation from our city controller, Charlie De Brunner, gave. We determined that we'd like to give the administration 30 days to come up with a plan to respond to the shortcomings mentioned by the plan. Also up for discussion was Bill Six regarding the LST. We've had a lot of discussions about that ongoing tied into the Strong Plan amendments. There was not too many questions from the members of council that night on that, and unfortunately, no one from the public was here to offer any questions or comment as well. That should be on the agenda, I believe, for the April 12 legislative session, following the provisions in terms of advertising.
Okay.
And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Moving on to ordinance of first reading, we have none this evening. Moving on to ordinance for amendment, we have none. Moving on to ordinance for final passage, none. Moving on to resolutions, Resolution 14, 2016. Mr. Petrowski, please read that into record.
Sure. Resolution 14 of 2016 was moved by Ms. Williams, second by Mr. Baltimore. It's a resolution appointing Reverend Don Rico E. Colden to the Harrisburg Housing Authority.
Any questions or comments on Resolution 14, council members? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Baltimore?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Hodges?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 14 passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 23.
Resolution 23 of 2016 was moved by Mr. Allen, second by Mr. Johnson. It's a resolution appointing the City of Harrisburg's grant manager as an authorized official within the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation's dot grants online system.
Any questions or comments on Resolution 23? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Baltimore?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Hodges?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 23 passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 24.
Resolution 24, 2016, was moved by Mr. Allen, second by Mr. Johnson. It's a resolution ratifying the agreement with the CA Technologies to renew the existing software licensing of the city's mainframe computer system and network components.
Any questions or comments, council members? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Baltimore?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Hodges?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 24 passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 25.
Resolution 25, 2016, was moved by Ms. Hodges, second by Mr. Johnson. It's a resolution approving the submission of a grant application to the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources for the purpose of improving the Riverwalk slab and steps in Riverfront Park.
That would place in Parks and Recreation enrichment. Moving on to Resolution 26.
Resolution 26 of 2016 was moved by Mr. Major, second by Mr. Johnson. It's a resolution reappointing Vermicose to serve on the Harrisburg Planning Commission.
Questions or comments, Resolution 26, council members? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Baltimore?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Hodges?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 26 passes.
Moving on to Resolution 27.
Resolution 27 of 2016 was moved by Mr. Major, second by Mr. Johnson. It's a resolution approving the request of Ma Anna Perin Herna LLC to transfer license number R-19033 from Tent Restaurants Operations Incorporated, 2625 Brindle Drive, Susquehanna Township, Dolphin County, into the City of Harrisburg to be utilized at Bollywood Bar and Grill, 110 North, that should be Second Street instead of Second State Street, Harrisburg, PA, which is to operate as a bar and restaurant facility.
That would place in Public Safety Committee. Any old business council members? Any new business council members? Mr. Johnson?
I had the privilege of attending a lunch, I mean, I guess, a chat and chew with the chief at the Club Diner this past Friday, which was a very, very good experience. I enjoyed it myself and I liked that initiative and I'm encouraged to attend more, probably some during lunchtime because I work at night, so I get real tired. But it was, it was a great experience to kind of interact with residents, ran into residents who are just excited to see, you know, police officers and places that they dine and eat and just bring up different issues, you know, so kind of having that type of connection within the community is, you know, beautiful because, you know, these are the officers that, you know, serve the citizens. So the citizens should be able to see you more, we should be more visible. So I want to commend the administration, you know, for that initiative and I look forward to attending more.
Thank you. Any other? Any other?
Yeah.
Ms. Daniels?
Two things. The first one is Harrisburg area now and the LGBT Center for Central Pennsylvania is hosting an event, March 29, at 6:00 PM at the LGBT Center on Third Street. We're having Jessica Rothschild, who is a commissioner for the Pennsylvania Commission for Women, who will be speaking about women's issues as they apply in the state, and it's a free event.
What time?
6:00 PM.
Thanks.
The second thing is the American Immigration Lawyers Association is having its annual citizenship drive. So if you know anyone who is eligible for immigration and hasn't been able to apply because they can't afford it, please let them know that they can attend on April 2nd. It actually is in the city of York. At 11:00 AM, the Martin Library, which is located at 159 East Main Street, I can't read my handwriting.
Market.
Market Street, in New York, Pennsylvania. They'll be screened there for eligibility and once they're, once they're deemed eligible, on April 9, attorneys across the state will be filling out those citizenship applications for free for them. So if you know anyone, please encourage them to attend. It's one of the, it's one of the few opportunities to get legal services for free.
Okay. Anyone else? I only have one piece of legislation. It's from the Harrisburg Promise. It's the Harrisburg Promise Initiative. It states, "Dear parents, the Harrisburg Housing Authority, the Harrisburg Area Community College, and the City of Harrisburg have unified their efforts to engage our young people as they consider various career pathways. Our unified effort is called the Harrisburg Promise. Your child has been identified as a potential candidate for the newly created Harrisburg Promise Program. The Harrisburg Promise Program sets out to encourage seventh through 12th graders as they begin to make meaningful career choices. Essentially, the students will be coached to consider going to college, possibly for free, develop skills to become excellent decision-makers, community leaders, and successful contributors to their communities and society. There will be eligibility criteria that the students must adhere to in order to be admitted into and remain in the program. Moreover, the students will be required to meet certain standards over the duration of the program's six years. This notice is intended to determine whether you have an interest in enrolling your child or children in the program. And following the receipt of your letter of intent, another notice will be sent to your attention with the eligibility requirements, application information, orientation, and meeting dates. If your child will be entering the seventh grade in the fall of 2016 and you are interested in receiving more information about the program, please provide the requested information below NR call, Carl Singleton at 717-736-1461, or mail your intentions to k singleton@cityofharrisburg.com. You may also inbox Mr. Singleton on Facebook, Carl Singleton. And again, their goal is to recruit 100 sixth graders in this program." Any other new business? May I have a motion to adjourn?
Some of them.
May I have a second?
Say.
Meeting's officially adjourned.